Good afternoon, everyone. I want to welcome you to this Stratford City Council meeting, our 4,615th meeting. And this afternoon, joining in the council chamber is Chief Administrative Officer Joan Thompson, our city clerk, Tatiana Defoe, and our manager of communications, Mike Mites. There are a number of directors on the line as well, David St. Louis, Ed Delovick, Kim McElroy, Jaclyn Mockler, John Parity, Acting Director of Corporate Services, Janice Behrenes, Stephanie Potter, Quinn Malott, and Mike Mosley. So with that, I will call the meeting to order, and I'll ask that we all observe a moment of silent reflection in honor and memory of Captain Jen Casey, who passed away a week ago Sunday in a tragic accident as part of the Snowbirds team, and for all people that are suffering and needing help at this time, if we could just quietly reflect on that. Thank you. Our first item is a declaration of conflict of interest. Seeing none at this time from members of council, we'll go to item three, which is the adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of the city council from May 11, 2020. Moved by Councillor Gaffney and seconded by Councillor Ingram, at the minutes of May 11, be adopted. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Item four is the adoption of the addenda for this afternoon's meeting, and there is not one, so we will move on to item five, which is a report of the committee of the holding camera session. And from the May 11, 2020 session, under the municipal act 2001 as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered. An appointment of director to the Stratford Economic Development, or sorry, Economic Enterprise Development Corporation. And the recommendation that came from the in-camera session is that Christine McWebb, representative for the education sector, be appointed to the board of SEED Co. for a three-year term till June 2023, and that there be an option for an additional three-year term until successors are appointed by city council. And that should be granted a requirement as of an exemption due to her residence being outside the city. Moved by Councillor Gaffney, seconded by Councillor Ritzma. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. I think for people watching, Ms. McWebb is the executive director of the Stratford Campus of the University of Waterloo. We look forward to having her in, replacing the former executive director, Ms. Jenny Dabanco. Item 5.2, at the May 25, 2020 session, under the municipal act as amended, there are matters regarding security of municipal property of the municipality or local board, and a position planned for seizure criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried out or to be carried out on behalf of the municipality. And at that meeting, a second item relating to labor relations or employee negotiations was considered, and direction was provided on both those items, and no recommendations come forward at this time. Item six, there are no hearings of deputations or presentations scheduled for today, so we'll go to orders of the day. And item 7.1 is a resolution that the report titled "Update on Waste Management Concerns" be received for information. Councillor Beatty and Councillor Ingram moving and seconding. Discussion. Councillor Burbak.
Thank you. I just had a question about some of the concerns about lineups at the landfill. That was the one that I brought forward to subcommittee. I'm wondering if a possible solution could be just to add an extra hour to the amount of time that we have for our hazardous waste collection, because those are the days where we do have quite long lineups. And last year was the time when a few people mentioned it to me, and there was already the two lines were being used. So I'm just wondering if we could possibly consider just adding perhaps an extra hour or two on to the amount of time that we have the hazardous waste collection.
Thank you. Mr. Delovick, would you like to respond, please?
Yes, through your worship. We will have to get a costing from our contractor, because we do bring in the contractor for that, and find out what the cost will be to add an hour or two hours per day. In addition, although we don't see it being significant, we would have to get an amendment to our certificate of approval to allow for longer operating hours, because that's controlled through that. And not only do our contractor, but we will have staff on for the additional time as well. So there will be some cost to do all that, and we would, if council wants us to look into that, we'd have to come back with that information.
Okay, thank you. I do think that after, we've all been sort of waiting with our hazardous waste, so I would imagine that once we finally have a session, it's going to be quite busy. So we might want to think about at least having that for this year, because there are going to be fewer hazardous waste collection days.
If we could, on the original motion, we can come back to that one. Then, Councillor Burbak, is there any discussion on the acceptance of the report? All right, all those in favor, opposed, if any, and that's carried. Councillor Burbak, would you like to make a referral of the extended hours for a report?
Yes, please.
A seconder for that. Councillor Seven, thank you. It is a referral, so there will be no discussion. All those in favor, opposed, if any, that's carried. Thank you. Item 7.2 is a resolution for suspension of festival hydro dividends, and the staff recommendation is that the report titled "Suspension of Festival Hydro Dividends" be received for information. Moved by Councillor Bunting, seconded by Councillor Ingram. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carried. Thank you. Item 7.3 is a proclamation for Gay Pride Month, and the motion is that city council hereby proclaims June 2020 as Gay Pride Month in the city of Stratford, and authorizes the flying the pride flag at Stratford City Hall for the month of June. Councillor Ritzma and Councillor Vazalacos moving and seconding. Discussion. Councillor Gaffney.
That would be mounted on either side of the front doors on the facade of the building?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anything further? If not, all those in favor, opposed, if any, and that's carried. Thank you. Item 7.4 is the 2019 Stratford Water Pollution Control Plan Annual Report, and the staff recommendation is that the 2019 Stratford Water Pollution Control Plan Annual Report be received for information. Moved by Councillor Vazalacos, seconded by Councillor Burbak. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Item 7.5 is resolution, community garden at Britannia Street. Staff recommendation that the report "Community Garden at Britannia" be received for information by council. Councillor Seven's moving. Councillor Bunting is seconding. Discussion. Councillor Burbak.
Thank you. I'm wondering if there would be a possible solution. There are a few residents who would really like to do some gardening, so rather than having it as a city-initiated thing, could we possibly create or just designate some space where they could have their own containers, plant their own garden, and be responsible for watering and tools and everything themselves on city property? I'm wondering if there would be any room for that for city properties.
Ms. McElroy.
Through your worship, that is something we could take back and look at. Our plan at this point is to make it available for the second phase of Britannia, too, so we could take a look at the property and see if there's any feasibility, especially with the costs associated, but we can take it back and respond.
Thank you. I was hoping it was going to be cost-free. That was sort of the thought. If we could do it in a way that volunteers could run it and provide their own equipment and so on, that it would be cost-free for the city.
Thank you. Councillor Henderson.
Yes, I was just going to say that the community garden that's up on Franklin Drive, I don't remember how that ever got started. I just remember when we were looking at it at one time, I've taken it away, and that's when it sort of came to light. But my understanding is the people in the area there do everything themselves, like they fundraised and got the shed there and all the equipment, and then different families have plots in there. Do you know if that's how that started, Kim?
If I could, I believe it is a broader community garden, which is not just for the residents of that housing complex. The Stratford Green Thumb Gardening Club are the ones that actually operate that one.
Well, I understand what Councillor Jody Burbak is saying. Like, I don't understand why, like, I know on our other city properties, people are allowed to have a garden in their backyards, and we have that one section already planned out that where they could have a community garden. So if somebody wanted to start their own gardening there, and bear in mind that next year with the construction of the second stage there, there could be some issues with that, but if they wanted to go ahead and do a little garden there, I don't really have a problem with that.
Ms. McElroy, could you give the background of the rationale from your report?
Thank you, through your worship. I'm going to have the housing manager, Eden Gudzinski, speak to her report.
Thank you.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor and councillors. We're really pleased to see an interest from the community in community gardens. The challenge we have on the site at this time, in addition to the fact that it would be temporary, is the fact that there is no water where the community garden is supposed to be. So the current water tap, you're talking a couple hundred meters that you would have to run a hose across the parking lot in order to get water out to that site. Another challenge is the fact that there is no storage space at Britannia right now. There's very limited in units. There's no community storage, so we wouldn't be able to have sheds and that type of thing. And then the third is really the restrictions around community gardens that have been placed by the province. So although they're allowed to operate, they're for individuals who have signed up, and they have very strict restrictions around, you know, number of people on site having hand-washing facilities, and we just don't, we have to take it back and look at what the implications were to put it on the site at this time.
Thank you. Is there anything further? The motion to receive the report has been made, and it has been seconded. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carried. Thank you. Item 7.6 is resolution for emergency childcare to support eligible workers in Stratford, Perth, and St. Mary's. And the staff recommendation is that the report "Emergency Childcare to Support Eligible Workers in Stratford, Perth, and St. Mary's" be accepted for information, and that council authorize the director of social services and chief administrative officer to approve temporary emergency daycare centers that have received approval from the Ministry of Education and Huron Public Health, and to enter into memorandums of understanding for temporary emergency daycares that may be required within the city of Stratford, the town of St. Mary's, and Perth County during the declaration of emergency, and that council amend delegation of authority bylaw 135-2017 as amended to authorize this delegation of authority. Moved by Councillor Ritzma, seconded by Councillor Ingram. Discussion. Councillor Henderson.
Do we have many children on the waiting list?
Ms. McElroy?
Yes, through your worship, can I get clarification as to waiting list where?
At the daycare centers.
For the city of Stratford?
No, St. Mary's, sorry.
Just through the chair, I will ask the manager of Children's Services to speak to the numbers that we are seeing.
Thank you, Kim. Through your worship, we haven't started receiving applications for St. Mary's yet, but we have seen four families calling with increase with about six children.
Thank you.
Councillor Vazalacos.
I just had a question around, now that we've had a couple of these sites open, both in Stratford and North Perth, and I'm just wondering how they're going and how the social distancing is working, and whether, you know, just sort of an impression of how well it's working, because I envision this as being sort of a model for when we actually can open up the daycare centers full-time, and wondering whether there's any lessons we're learning from this that can carry forward.
Through your worship, we are seeing positive results through this. The feedback is the staff have moved forward with the new service delivery model of two to five ratio. We have a strong partnership with the Huron Perth District Health Unit, weekly meetings to advise of changes to any policies that may be done. And I think it was through those partnerships with the ministry of, our ministry, as well as the Huron Perth District Health Unit and our Children's Services, that it's going well. We are seeing the numbers hit capacity in many cases, and otherwise, the one area was the YMCA was able to accommodate an earlier session at 6:30, and that helps with some of the shift work as well.
Thank you.
Anything further? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, if any, and that's carried. Item 7.7 is a resolution for active transportation on Lakeside Drive, and the staff recommendation that information provided in this report titled "Active Transportation on Lakeside Drive" be received for the consideration of council. Councillor Burbak's moving and seconded by Councillor Ingram. What we could do is receive the report and then discuss the options if we'd like. That might be the best way to do it. Any discussion on receiving the report? If not, all those in favor, opposed, if any, and that's carried. I'll recognize Councillor Burbak and Councillor Vazalacos in that order, and we'll go from there on their ideas. Councillor Burbak.
Thank you. I would like to make motion that we move forward with option two, which is the full shutdown of Lakeside Drive, but for weekends only. So a little bit of background, I did put the four options out for feedback to various people in the community. I got 90 responses back. Seventy of those people approximately wanted to go ahead with option two. Several of them said only on the weekend. Ten people opted for option one, which is the status quo. Ten people liked option three, which I also actually really liked, but I do feel like the cost is prohibitive for that. Some of the things that people mentioned, five people said that they have stopped their daily walks around the river because they feel uncomfortable with the physical distancing that's currently happening. They feel like they can't, they don't have enough space to be safe. A few said that they don't take their kids out on bikes because they don't feel safe having their kids riding on the road. Let's see. They also mentioned this would allow family groups to bike together or do other roller sports together. Several mentioned that mornings are particularly busy. I know I was out there on two afternoons, and yeah, it was quite a steady pace of people moving around the river. And some people were concerned about those with mobility challenges still having access to the river. And one thing that I would like to add to my motion is that we do open the Queen Street parking lot, and that the spaces along the river, closest to the river, would be accessible, designated accessible spaces, and that would allow people who have mobility challenges to still access the river. It's quite close there. Several people said it's a really great opportunity to encourage people to be active while safely socially distancing. I did go out both on Saturday and Sunday. For the most part, people were doing well with physical distancing, but I am concerned that once the province opens up with the restrictions being lifted, that we will have more visitors from outside of town, and that social distancing will become a problem there. Two other things that concerned me was the number of adult cyclists who are riding on the path. There was at least a dozen that I saw, and they were very courteous, but they did need to dodge around people, and I find that to be dangerous. So if we do open up Lakeside, I would like to see some signage indicating that people on wheeled vehicles should be on the road and not on the pathway. I also noticed several cars were parked in the full sun with their windows up, and they were idling. This is not so great, because it breaks our anti-idling bylaw, and it's certainly bad for the air quality of the city. So I do think that would help if people want to sit in their cars, they want to park at Lakeside Drive, they could, it is more shady, so they could possibly find a shady spot and roll their windows down, turn their engine off. So that's about all of my notes. I would like to make the motion that we proceed with option two, weekends only, and that the Queen Street parking lot be opened as well, with sites, accessible sites designated. Thanks.
So before I take a second, I need to see some hands. To clarify, weekends only, I take Saturday morning till Sunday evening?
Yes.
And a seconder for that proposal as put forward. Councillor Vazalacos, I recognize Councillor Vazalacos, Henderson, and Ingram in that order for raising their hands to address the matter. So, Councillor Vazalacos.
So I'm in support of weekend closures, not necessarily because what's going on at the river right now is unsafe or we're not able to manage it. I walk the river every day because it's in my neighborhood, and I have yet to see anything that I would actually flag as, you know, inappropriate gatherings or too many people. People are moving, they're giving everybody space, but I do think we have an opportunity to test drive weekend closures so that we have it all figured out, we know how it works and whether it's working well, because pretty soon, you know, a lot of what I'm hearing from the Economic Recovery Task Force is to leverage our outdoor space and our ability to have these outdoor spaces in this park system for visitors who come to Stratford. And rather than get caught behind the eight ball trying to figure out how this all works, I think it really, we have an opportunity here to roll it out on weekends and see how it's working and the logistics of it. And I, you know, I think there are a lot of locals using it right now, but we're going to find ourselves pretty quickly with more people using it. So, you know, as I said, I don't see a problem down there right now necessarily, but let's take this opportunity to, you know, figure out how it works well.
Councillor Henderson and Ingram, Clifford.
Yes, I will not be supporting this motion at how it's currently laid out. I prefer one that's the more like option three, but not the whole length. I sent this out to my accessibility committee, and some of the comments I got back is I do not agree with closing it off as, because I know of some seniors whose spouses or friends take them down to the river, unload manual or transfer chairs and push them to the walkway. They can't push the manual transfer very far. So I sort of am visualized, if you're doing marans to Queen Street, and then from Queen Street just have one side open to the bottom of Snake Hill, that way they can still come along, pull in and pull into the parking spot if they want to sit and enjoy the river with their windows down, not idling, and/or if they want to get out and transfer, because we do have a couple of transfer spots. One is halfway down below the bottom of the festival there, and then one at the corner of Queen Street so that they can get across to the River Drive. So I can't support option two because of that.
Thank you. Councillor Ingram.
Thank you. So I'm very similar to Councillor Henderson. I'm supportive of active transportation, and I'm supportive of a partial closure along Lakeside Drive along the weekends, but in addition to what Councillor Henderson has said, I don't believe that opening up the Queen Street parking lot and having that first row for people with mobility issues is going to achieve any objectives, because there's a lot of seniors in our community that have mobility issues, but they don't necessarily have a barrier-free tag from the Ministry of Transportation, so they're not going to be able to park in that front row. And then they're going to be parking in the second or third row of that parking lot, and they're going to be looking at the back of the cars in front of them, as opposed to being able to enjoy the scenery and see what's going on, and that's what they go down there to do. The other thing is that a lot of the seniors just like to drive past, they like to do a loop, they don't like to necessarily sit and park there. They like to, you know, enjoy the entire length or, you know, at least a part of the length, as opposed to sitting in a parking lot. And, you know, our community is a majority of seniors, so I think that we're really limiting the demographics that this motion could actually assist. The other thing is that if we're going to consider partial street shutdowns, I would prefer to look at this in areas in the core where we can have active transportation, and then people can be enjoying all of our small businesses that actually need the traffic, and they need people to be looking at what's happening and thinking and contemplating about stopping in or, you know, ordering online because they saw something in a window. That would be more beneficial, and it would do a couple of things. It would increase the active transportation, and then it would also help in our economic recovery and assist some of those small businesses. So I would prefer to look at it in that area versus the Riverside or Lakeside Drive, where we actually have a lot of open space, and a lot of people are currently already enjoying.
Thank you. Just for Councillor and everyone, there is a plan coming forward. There is a committee looking at the downtown four pieces as well. I had Councillor Clifford, Councillor Seven, Councillor Gaffney, and we'll start on our way through.
Yeah, I, thank you. I was going to ask, how would we end up closing the streets, and what kind of staffing would we have to have? I know I dragged that to Ed or the police, but who would control it? Who would close it down? Who would open it? And who would monitor it, like, during the weekend, as far as cars coming and going?
Mr. Delovick, do you want to talk about the operations?
Yes, through your worship, based on the timing, if it was from Saturday morning to Sunday night, we would have to bring in staff at those times to set up the barricades. More than likely, we would have the barricades if we did a full street closure, have them ready, and then the staff would come in and close it off. Again, you know, we'd have to advertise that the roads are closed, let emergency services know, and then we would have to arrange to get some spot checks done to make sure that someone isn't moving the barricades during the day to get around them, to get into those areas that have been closed off.
Mr. Delovick, and just so, I'm sure members of council know, but for people watching this, the Public Works Department has 24/7 operational staff on, correct?
Dear Chair, right now, we're running three shifts during the week. This would be some overtime where we would bring in staff on the Saturday morning, and then back on the Sunday night. Another option would be looking at Friday late afternoon, and then reopening Monday morning. That's another possibility where we wouldn't incur the overtime cost, but for Saturday to Sunday, there would be overtime.
Thank you. Councillor Seven, Gaffney, and Vazalacos.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I don't support the motion as it is. I agree with Councillor Henderson and Councillor Ingram's points. I just think there are so many people that just drive along the river, maybe they're not able to walk, or they don't have the time to go out, or if they're still working or whatever. And I think as things are opening up, I think maybe if we talked about this two months ago, it would have been different, but I think just the way things are going, and I know just summer in Stratford, a lot of the local people are not even around, so I see the numbers between sort of regional tourists, as it were, and people leaving town that live here to go to cottages or the beach or whatever. It probably will naturally kind of level it on its own, so I don't see a concern as far as a mass amount of people gathering down by the river, and there's a ton of space down there. And so I just, I just think that we don't need to shut down the road, and to me, it just sort of feels like we're cutting out a lot of people of what they're doing, so.
Thank you. Councillor Gaffney.
Thank you, and through your worship, I also do not support this.
Uh, thank you. And through your worship, I also do not support this, uh, this, uh, plan. Because for a couple of reasons, in reading the report, I see the police services have a concern that. It's going to become a gathering place and then it becomes an enforcement issue, I suspect. And unless we have consequences for people that are going to break the rules, uh, there's no, uh. Incentive for them not to break the rules. And human nature being what it is. Is that we are hunter-gatherers and, uh, this would be a, a gathering opportunity. Uh, and I'd also like to have a better understanding of. How the Police Services Board is going to, or, sorry, not the board, but the police services are going to be involved in the enforcement of this. Because it is going to become an enforcement. If we invite people to gather. By providing the bigger space, uh, for what's supposed to be, uh, an in-motion, uh, in-motion, uh. Program, uh, I think we are inviting. Continued exposure of people to this virus. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vasilakos.
Okay, so I'll, I'll start with it's gathering food, not gathering together is hunter and gatherer, but that's just a scientific point. Um, anthropological, uh, I, I'm going to go back to as we move forward. Outdoor spaces and use of outdoor spaces are going to be what we have. Um, it, you know, it is going to be some time before we're going to be able to actually be indoors for any length of time. So we do, so while I take the point about not inviting too many people to use our open spaces. I'm hearing an awful lot of inviting people to use our outdoor spaces. So I go back to at some point, we are going to have to deal with the fact that our park system is going to be a selling feature. For visitors who come here and we have an opportunity to figure out how we can use it so that we don't have conflicts with people who walk.
Counselor Vasilakos will come back to you, uh, when your screen comes back on. Counselor Burbak.
Yeah, just to respond to a couple of things, um, the thought about, uh, this drawing more people to gather. Uh, the idea with this is actually to get people moving. And currently it is possible for people, a, a large group of people to come and pull up with their cars. And unload all their barbecue things and so on and set up shop. Um, so really it's, it's no different. Actually, it probably is less likely that people on bikes and rollerblades are going to bring a whole lot of stuff and set up for the day in the park. So I, I do think that, um, that might be a little bit of a misconception. Because I think what we're trying to do is encourage people to actively move through the space as opposed to park on the space and, and stay there. Um, the thing about having it on weekends is that allows five days a week, uh, people that live here, local people can enjoy. So that's the majority of time when people can drive their cars down. So it's not like this is a permanent shutdown all the time. Um, I do think that, um, possibly, could I amend the motion to. Incapacitate Counselor Henderson's idea. Um, to have those parking spaces, uh, between Queen Street and Snake Hill. As opened to traffic so that people can park along that spot. And maintain everything else about the, the motion.
So what you, you want to amend your own motion to? Actually, when Counselor Vasilakos comes back on, she can agree with it. You would close from Waterloo Street to Queen in both directions.
Yes.
And the westbound lane on bottom of Snake Hill to Queen Street. So you would need to divide the, the east and westbound lane for pedestrians who would be in the east or the westbound lane. And traffic would use the eastbound lane so they can get in and out of those spots.
That would be ideal. And if that was too complicated, then maybe just, uh, just have the shutdown stop at Queen Street. And then allow two-way traffic along there.
Okay.
Um, that might be simpler and just have good signage for people saying, this is ending, vehicles are now going to be from here forward. Um, and I do think that we do need to have some signage for people to encourage the physical distancing. And to make sure that wheeled vehicles stay on the road and not on the path.
If I, if I could, uh, to simplify them, the, the motion then, you would like to approve option two. Closing from Lakeside, or sorry, closing Lakeside from Waterloo to Queen in both directions.
Yes.
And that it be on weekends and why don't you go from Friday afternoons till Monday mornings? So that, that would then deal with the overtime issue.
Right. Okay, that sounds great.
It wouldn't be from Waterloo, it'd be from Moran's. Right?
I'm guessing from Waterloo.
From, be from Waterloo, Bonnie, or you're thinking something?
But I thought we had to have that part open because the festival is doing their construction and working there.
Not on the weekend.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Counselor Vasilakos, I'm not sure whether you heard, Counselor Burbak had expressed an interest in, in amending or changing her motion slightly. So I'll give it to you and if you as a second would like to agree, and then it would be that Lakeside would be closed from Waterloo to Queen. Uh, in both east and west directions from Friday late afternoon till Monday morning. And you would agree to that as the second? Thank you. Counselor Gaffney, I saw your hand.
Uh, yes, I wouldn't assume that they're not working on weekends because, uh. They're going to want to get this project done and move on to the next thing because that's how close they are to being done. So unless, I would suggest we run it through Ellis Dawn and find out, uh, if they're going to be working weekends and I expect they will be.
Okay, I just didn't observe them working this weekend. They were all shut down.
I would just say that, uh, their, their construction challenges aren't necessarily our, our citizens' challenges. And, uh, they were supposedly a couple of weeks away from being finished not too long ago. They could make provisions to work in the areas they need to Monday to Friday if it impedes the road. Counselor Bunting then, Counselor, sorry, BD Bunting, Vasilakos.
Yes, I, I'd be concerned with putting them up, taking them down every week and the cost involved with that, number one. And number two, I can't see why it shouldn't go from Moran's to, I, I see a sort of a, a way that we can come to, uh. A, a, a decision here. If we went to Moran's and that would accommodate the whatever's going on at, at Tom Patterson. And going, uh, going to Queen Street. So that's what I would like to see myself personally. But, but the cost involved of putting them up and taking them down every weekend, uh, from here till, who knows, the end of September? When, when do we stop this? So, um, I, I, I would say if you're going to close it, close it permanently. And, uh, for that particular period of time, or for that distance.
The only concern I'd issue or, or raise would be you're letting people come down Lakeside one block, pushing them back up. And then if they want to continue heading east, you've now loaded them onto Waterloo Street, uh, till Queen to come back down to the river. So you're probably better off not to allow them on, on the Lakeside Drive to start with if that's the intent. It's for everyone to decide that. Counselor BD.
Thank you. Now actually, Counselor Bunting, uh, raised, uh, the point that I wanted to address as well. And, and that is, um, an end date for this. Um, I, I don't have a, an issue with, with giving this a try. Um, but I, I think that, uh, this, um, hopefully will be something that, uh. We can look forward to it coming to an end when we can all get back to our new normal. And I was wondering if we can also put on this motion that this only goes to the end of 2020.
Yes, noted. And the mover and second or, or, okay, Counselor Vasilakos.
Um, so apologies because I got booted off and, and I missed some of that conversation. Um, I, you know, I'm just wondering, does the road closure really impede the construction at the theater? Because they have multiple accesses. Do they necessarily need that front access? That seems, it seems to me that they can use the other accesses for what they need. And any work that they absolutely need to do along that front could be scheduled for when it's open. So that, to me, that's just a scheduling issue. So it's neither here nor there. I, I, I do wonder a little bit about talking about the logistics and the cost of this. Because we did do it for the hockey, like every Friday night. And there, there was a, a, quite a bit of work that went into laying closures and additional parking for the hockey games. Which I, you know, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with. I, I think it worked quite well. Again, I walk along there and it seemed fine. So I'm not sure that we, we have any sort of logistical issues. I do have logistical issues though if we, if, if we. As, as we get shorter and shorter on the closures, um, that you get way too many people turning. And as soon as you have people, multiple turns and people getting turned around, you're just going to have issues around that. So, um, you know, I, I, I'm agreeable to the, to the amended motion, but starting to shift those at all is going to be problematic.
And with the hockey, we, it was discussed, they, they did it on Fridays till Friday nights when we had staffing on. That's why I suggested we go back to Friday nights till Monday morning. So there's not, if you're going to do it, that you don't have the overtime cost.
Yeah, which is, which is, but I was just saying sort of logistically, we've already done this a little bit and, and, you know, it worked.
Counselor Seven.
I'd just like to request your recorded vote, please.
Counselor Henderson? If we could, yeah, go ahead and then Counselor Ingram.
Okay, I just wanted to bring up to that, um, if we've got it closed from Waterloo to Queen. Um, people that are coming along there, say if they're on bikes or whatever, then they get to Queen and it's not open. That's why I still like the idea of when you're heading west from Snake Hill to Queen, it's closed on the one side. Just have it open on the one side so that you can still get to the parking and cross the road. Um, if you're coming along that way, then you just steer over to the left and you still got a whole lane that you can. Ride your bike on or whatever and walk and I guess you'd have to have. Pylons along, maybe that's not such a good idea.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That was originally in the report was the number of pylons could be problematic. Counselor Seven and Counselor Ritzma. Sorry, Counselor Ingram. Sorry, Counselor Seven, if I could, Counselor Ingram and Seven and Ritzma, sorry, my apologies.
It's okay, thanks. Um, I just want to be clear, I understand what the, what the current motion is under the, on the table right now.
The current motion, and I'm going to ask that we send it to staff and have a special meeting later in the week so they can work all this out. But it would be closing Lakeside Drive from Waterloo to Queen, both east and west on Friday nights. And they would determine the time that it would take effect until Monday morning and it would be on weekends. And that's what they would like, Ms. Thompson has indicated, they'd like to come back with a, a clear plan then for council as it relates to that.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the signage piece as well. All right, Counselor Seven, Ritzma, Clifford.
No, I just wanted to reiterate my opposites into the motion. I still think that, I mean, there's so many people that we don't even know. We don't have a sense of how many people go by remaining around the town to just drive by the river. And, and I think, uh, if it's not, it hasn't been an issue in the last two months, I don't think it's going to be an issue going forward, so.
Thank you. Counselor Ritzma.
Yes, my, my concern is that if we don't do this correctly. And I'm a little concerned about if we don't block the roads. If we try to get to a spot where we're sharing roads with vehicles and pedestrians. Um, I think we're going to have a, a safety challenge. So it's, it's either. Leaving those, um, spots, uh, along, um, the up by Snake Hill. Leaving those not available at all and the road closed. I, I don't think we can start going one-way traffic to allow people to pull in and then the other lane used for pedestrians. I, I'm really concerned about mixing vehicular and pedestrian traffic there. And I, I, I believe that would probably come back in the report as well.
Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, I was just going to ask for a clarification. If, if we're opening, the parking's opening on Queen Street. Is the parking lot, uh, the festival parking lot, is that included in, in the motion or is it not part of it anymore?
It, it would be, uh, it would be considered by staff as one of the, uh, options as well for people to turn around and, and do that. Opening at Lakeside Drive. Counselor Burbak.
Uh, just wanted to clarify for Counselor Ritzma. So the motion is that we would close right at Queen Street. And that it would become two-way. So there's no one-way options. Um, because those parking spots, actually, when you, when you're biking, it's, it's quite dangerous because people pull out of those spots. If they haven't backed in, they're backing out and it's quite dangerous for bikes. So i- it's also dangerous for cars as we probably all experienced. So it's probably better not to have one lane closed, one lane open, and, and that would be a little bit confusing. So, um, just clarifying that the motion is to not do that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bunting, Counselor Seven. Counselor Bunting, can you unmute your microphone?
Sorry, I'm, just, just to clarify, the parking lot that's, uh, between the. Uh, the arena and the lake, that would be accessible through the street that runs down behind the arena.
It would, it'd be accessible from North Street.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Seven.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to point out that we have a report in front of us as part of this discussion. That, that staff are, have different options laid out and they're not really recommending the other options. That, and some of them are pieces of what we're talking about here. And so I just think it seems a little, it's a little bit redundant to me. To, to ask staff to come back with another report on the same thing when they've already sort of told us what they think and.
Thank you. The reason staff had asked for it to come back is so they could take this, lay out a map, talk about the signage. How they would secure the area and make sure that we're aware of the costs if there are any, is what the plan was. All right, if there's nothing else, I know there was a request for a recorded vote. I will, I will call it, uh, or Miss, sorry, Ms. Defoe will come and call the motion and she will read it back as well. Or I will read it back and she will call the question. And it is that the Lakeside Drive, the approved in principle, to close. From Waterloo Street in both directions to Queen Street. On Friday evenings until Monday mornings and that the matter be referred to staff to come back with a plan regarding signage. And availability of parking lots at the Almond Arena and the Queen Street Lot for use by vehicles. And, uh, that is what it is as of right now unless anyone else sees anything and I'll turn it over to Ms. Defoe to call the question.
Through your worship, starting with Counselor Seven, please state whether you are in support or opposed to the motion. Counselor Seven.
Opposed.
Counselor Bunting, you're going to have to unmute your microphones as a reminder.
Support.
Counselor Vasilakos.
Support.
Counselor Ingram.
Support.
Counselor Burbak.
Support.
Mayor Matson.
Support.
Counselor Henderson.
Support.
Counselor BD.
Support.
Counselor Ritzma.
Or.
Counselor Clifford. If you could kindly unmute your microphone.
Support.
And Counselor Gaffney.
Or.
Through your worship, it is ten in support and one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Defoe. Item seven point eight is a resolution. It's the 2020 Building Inspection Budget. And the staff recommendation is that the report titled 2020 Building Inspection Budget be received for information. Moved by Counselor Vasilakos and Counselor Ingram second discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed if any, that's carried. Resolution seven point nine is from the Stratford Soldiers War Memorial Restoration. And it is that the City of Stratford undertake restoration of the Stratford Soldiers War Memorial. Using the grant awarded by the Veterans Affairs Canada Commemorative Partnership Program, Community War Memorial Fund. And the Community Services Department Parks Facility Improvement Budget. And that the mayor and clerk be authorized to enter into a contribution agreement with Veterans Affairs Canada to carry out the memorial restoration project. And that council grants an exemption from the purchasing policy to award the restoration direct. Toward the restoration directly to Anderson Cemetery Contract. Moved by Counselor Gaffney and seconded by Counselor Beatty. Counselor Gaffney?
Uh, I just want to make clear for understanding that this is a Senate half we're talking about. And I, and I also would like to ask a question that. This, uh, through you, your worship, that, that this project has been reviewed by, uh, our local legion group.
So this actually, this project came to us from Boncaster, who's a local resident and president of the Army Navy Air Force Veterans. Stephanie Potter and Quinn Malott from our staff were together and they received the support of the Legion and the local Army Navy Air Force Veterans Association.
Yes, I, I just, I just noticed there wasn't anything in the report, so I just wanted to get clarification on that.
They were required to support Veterans Affairs to continue the, the grant application.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone further? If not, all those in favor, opposed if any, and that's carried. Item seven ten is a resolution. It's the COVID-19 financial position for the City of Stratford and it's the update. And the recommendation is that the financial position to the city update be received for information. Counselor Clifford and Counselor Burbak moving and seconding discussion. Counselor Ingram?
Thank you. I, I just had a question about the deferral of the capital projects. In, in the short term, this saves the city money. But is it possible that this could end up costing us more money in the long term?
Mr.? Ms. Baroness, if you can answer that, please?
Yes, the deferring of capital projects doesn't save us any money. Because all of the capital projects are funded through the reserve funds. Now, building up those reserve funds is done through the operating budget as transfers to reserve funds. So those transfers to reserve funds to build up those funds could be reduced or we have some flexibility there. But actually deferring the capital project doesn't save money. It does help our cash flow.
Okay, thank you.
This could also be, uh, considered if the federal government does offer support to municipalities. Which we, we hope to hear on in the next coming weeks. Anything further? If not, all those in favor of the motion, opposed if any, and that's carried. Thank you to Ms. Baroness, Finance Staff, Ms. Thompson for their work on that, as well as all. Corporate leadership staff who have reviewed the numbers. Item seven point eleven is a resolution for parking. And it is that free parking be extended until August thirtieth, twenty twenty. That the current parking permits that have been issued remain valid until August thirtieth, twenty twenty. Counselor Burbak moving, seconded by Counselor Henderson, discussion. Counselor Ingram?
Thank you. Um, the, the meter hood rental rates that were referenced in the report. The deposit seems reasonable to me, but the rental rate, the daily rental rate for those meter hoods. Seems to penalize businesses that are already struggling and that are, are trying to come up with alternative ways to make their. Business operations pivot. And I'm wondering if we could also waive those daily rental rates for the meter hood, but continue on with that meter hood deposit. Um, just in the event that there are, there is, you know, anything happens to, to the hood.
So Counselor Ingram, you'll move that we, uh, withdraw the rental rate. For parking spaces in the downtown core for businesses. Would you put a, a maximum on that? I believe it's currently four. But would you want to limit it to less than that? And then it would stay in effect till August thirtieth is your intent?
Yeah, that's correct. So I, I think, um, four is probably more than sufficient, maybe even two. But I, I'm happy to stay with four, whatever works.
Could I suggest that we try to do two and if they'd like to rent an additional two? So that there's enough spots for everybody if people decided to take us up on this?
Absolutely, I'd agree with that.
Seconder, Counselor Henderson, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed if any, and that's carried. Thank you. Item seven twelve is a resolution for urgent emergency transit funding. And I have the original motion, sorry, on item seven eleven, which was Counselor Burbak and Counselor Henderson. That the free parking be extended to August thirtieth and the current parking permits remain valid until August thirtieth. That was the original motion. Discussion on that. Counselor Gaffney?
Yeah, I can't support this res, uh, recommendation because. One of the problems I see happening already is that, uh, generally the Cooper Street parking lot is empty, but they're. They're, uh, which, and the effect B. Uh, as people start coming back downtown to work, is that they're parking downtown because they get to park for free. So we've, uh, we've completely. We've basically turned our downtown into a free parking lot. And, uh, if the store owners are concerned about, uh, the ability of customers to, uh. To come into their stores when they're the ones that have to park at the Cooper lot. Uh, I can see people stop coming downtown to do their, uh, to do their purchasing. So that's. That's why I can't support this, uh, resolution.
Thank you. Counselor Vasilakos?
I would suggest that downtown business owners are keenly aware of the need for keeping those spots available and free for the people who are coming to their stores. Especially as a lot of them are doing curbside pickup and they absolutely need those spots to, to keep moving so, so they can deliver. So I would, my suggestion would be to maybe a little bit of communication with the BIA on the importance of continuing to use. Um, the Cooper lot for employees as we try to. You know, I, I can see, I can see why employees might start doing that, but I think that businesses do have a responsibility to remind their employees. Um, the importance of leaving it open.
The other piece I, I could remind you is we do still have two parking enforcement officers on. And the limit of the maximum time in a space would still apply and they would be applying that rule. So merchants that decided to park on the street for longer than the duration they're permitted. Could still receive a ticket even though parking is free. And I'd hope that we wouldn't have to use that as a way to move them to the lots, but, uh. I think that might be a remedy that would solve some of that. Counselor Burbak and Counselor Henderson?
I'd just like to add to that. I, I think that the Cooper lot's probably empty because a lot of the stores are closed and there's no employees parking downtown. So that may not be reflective of all the employees parking right downtown. Um, I think it's just a sign of the times, but, um, I, I do think that business owners would be aware as Counselor Vasilakos, Vasilakos said. Thank you.
Counselor Henderson?
Yes, I think you're right, Jody. I think that there's a lot of, I don't go downtown very often. I, maybe every 10 days or so we go out for a little drive. And there always seems to be lots of parking spots down there now. But I wanted to mention something else. Dan, you're cutting in and out when you're talking. So I wonder if somehow you can move the computer a bit closer or move the mic or something because you're talking and then it sort of cuts and then it talks when it cuts.
Counselor Henderson, the microphone is right here. I can't get it much closer. It could be your internet connection unless others are finding the same thing. Okay. All right. So if we could, all those in favor of the original motion? Opposed if any, and that's carried. Thank you. Item seven twelve is a resolution for urgent. Emergency transit funding and the recommendation is that the Canadian Urban Transit Association's resolution. Requesting emergency funding from the Government of Canada to provide immediate liquidity to transit agencies and ongoing funding. To alleviate revenue loss as ridership rebuilds be endorsed. And that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Prime Minister of Canada, the Minister of Transport Canada, the Minister of Finance Canada. The Premier of Ontario, the Member, Member of Parliament for Perth Wellington, the Member of Provincial Parliament for Perth Wellington. And all Ontario municipalities. All moved. Thank you, Counselor Ritzma and Counselor, uh, Gaffney. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed if any, and that's carried. There are no, uh, there is no business for which previous notice has been given. And there is no notice of intent at this time. So item twelve is new business. Counselor Vasilakos and Counselor Ritzma?
Um, I just wanted, since we have been talking about active transportation and, and, um, there has been a, a lot of discussion around. Promoting active transportation as a way for people to get to work, um, a safe way for people to get to work. And I know that the federal government has also been talking about, um, specifically funding active transportation and cycling projects. So I do know we have a number of projects that were approved by council, but sort of got bumped around with some of our pedestrian. Work that we did around the schools and on Huntington. So I know there was like Mornington, we had the piece of completing McCarthy. And also the piece on Duro, um, the multi-use trails that we had approved in the past. And I'm just wondering if any of those projects are sort of shovel-ready so that when we get some of that funding coming through, we can maybe. Um, take advantage of it, but then also, you know, now is kind of a good time to do some of that construction as well.
Thank you. Counselor Ritzma?
Just wondering if we could get a brief update on the public washrooms, particularly the ones in the park areas.
Ms. Mokler, Director of Human Resources, if you want to cover that up?
Through your worship, yes, we are looking at a phased approach, uh, in terms of, uh, the washrooms. And, uh, we will need to have some consultation, uh, around that, uh, with our unions. And, uh, there'll be, uh, three phases to the opening of the washrooms. And, uh, we will move forward. Making sure that we use our resources wisely and, uh, look at our, uh, complement of staff in order to enable it.
Thank you.
Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Ingram?
Just, uh, looking at the community services report that receipt, we received earlier in the week. Uh, again, my question goes back to shelters and. I don't disagree with what the staff are suggesting that the space is four by eight. Which makes it a confined space, which makes it impossible. To, uh, conform to the public health distancing measures. That leads me to the question of if we were going to put more of these shelters in. Uh, I suggest that they built, be built to the specifications that they could be used. Uh, during, uh, uh, a situation like we're in right now. Which we all know could be solved at the end of the year or if we take. HIV AIDS, which is 20 or 30 or 40 years old and they still don't have a vaccination for that virus. And, uh, so I think our future is that, uh, we're going to be, uh. Practicing social distancing. On a more frequent, uh, basis. So I want to make a suggestion that we look into that before we start for buying more shelters. And buying more benches. Five-foot benches are not going to do it anymore. Uh, if we're buying benches and this is for community services and for public works. Uh, we're looking at buying 10-foot benches or something. So we can maintain that social distancing. So I don't know if we're in a position. To make a motion, uh, to refer these things to staff or. Just, uh, discussion is, uh, of value moving forward.
So if you could, uh, refer that back to, uh, staff and Mr. Mosley and Director St. Louis and Mr. D'Lovec, they can all take a look at it.
Then I will make a referral motion if that's acceptable, your worship.
Thank you. Seconder, Counselor Burbak, thank you. Discussion. All those in favor? Caught myself there. That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship.
Counselor Ingram?
Thank you. I, I have, uh, two questions for Mr. D'Lovec, please. Um, the first one is the sidewalk on Lakeside Drive beside the, the river. Is that a sidewalk or is that a multi-use pathway?
Uh, through your worship, um, all to check my understanding, it was, it was a, a trail. And maybe they St. Louis would know better, but in my time here, we've never considered it as a multi-use trail. It was just a trail.
Okay, thank you. And then my, my second question is I was wondering if you could, um, follow up on Counselor Vasilakos's question?
Uh, through your worship, with that, with respect to the Federal Infrastructure Program for Active Transportation?
Yes.
Okay, um, with, staff is compiling a list of projects that we have that could, uh, potentially be eligible for the projects. So, uh. Um, we've gone through the ones that, uh, Counselor Vasilakos, Vasilakos has, uh, highlighted and other ones that we're looking at as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Burbak and Clifford?
Thank you. Just to add to that, um, the, uh, TJ Dolan closure, the, the one that's from St. Vincent. Um, hoping that's on the list as well.
Your worship, it is, it's, and that's still subject to, uh, the closure. And, uh, we just haven't brought back the report yet to council because of, uh, it would need public involvement.
Counselor Clifford?
Yeah, I was going to ask, was brought up a couple of times about the report from the STA. With all the plays being closed. Uh, i- is there a report coming from the STA? As far as what their plans are, as far as their staffing and, uh, plans for the, like, the remainder of the year for Stratford?
Ms. Baroness?
So, uh, it's both the beginning of May. I did receive an update from the STA. Uh, they have revised their revenues and they have revised, uh, some of their expenses. They are currently still showing a deficit. I was in communication with the director there last Friday. And she is still waiting for a little more information to see how things, uh, go in the near future. And then I think they're planning to bring some more budget revisions forward.
Thank you. Anything further? If not, we'll go to the confirmatory bylaw. Yeah. First, if I could, sorry, just kind of, my sheet, sheets are out of order here, so. Tough having two clerks, one a former and one an acting or a current. So there we go. Uh, item, item 10 is the bylaw of appointments to seat co. Uh, item 10 two is an amended delegate of authority bylaw with respect to approval of temporary emergency daycares. Item 10 three is the Commemorative Partnership Program Contribution Agreement for Veterans Affairs. And item 10 four is the confirmatory bylaw. They can be taken collectively upon unanimous approval. Counselor Ritzma and Counselor Beatty, discussion. If not, all those in favor, opposed if any, and that's unanimous. So we'll go to first and second reading of those bylaws. Counselor Henderson and Counselor Ingram, moving bylaws 10 one, 10 two, 10 three and 10 four. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, opposed if any, and that's carried. Third and final reading is Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Burbak for bylaws 10 one, 10 two, 10 three and 10 four. All those in favor, opposed if any, and that's carried. There is the consent agenda. Is there any items on the consent agenda anyone would like to discuss at this time? Counselor Clifford?
I believe there is something about this, uh, crosswalk on Huron Street that we're planning on doing. And with the highway improvement, is, is like they're going to improve that street. Is, is it in, can. If it's done before they improve the street, is that going to affect anything?
D'Lovec?
Yeah, through the chair, uh, I reviewed that with staff and just with the, uh, room we have there. Um, where it's going to be located, there will, really won't be any changes when we do the, uh. Uh, improvements on Huron Street. So we'll take that into account, but, you know, from what staff's looked at, uh, we don't see any issues with, uh, the work that would occur later on.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, that, uh, if there's no other items on the consent agenda, that brings us to item 14, which is the adjournment of today's meeting. Moved by Counselor Vasilakos and Counselor Bunting. All those in favor, opposed if any, and that's carried. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.